To the Jersey City Board of Adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for September 23rd, 2021, a little after 6:30. We're not coming to you in City Hall. We're coming to you via Zoom. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, we're coming to you in this virtual meeting format. So let's get started. Call order and Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands. Thank you. Yeah, are there any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk, and we have the notices to be marked.
Okay, that'll be B1.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready, can we please take roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Patel. You're around you. Okay, sorry. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Yeah, yeah.
Here.
Commissioner Rujo?
Here.
Commissioner McCormick?
Here.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yeah.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
Here, we have eight present.
Thank you. Bridget, can you swear on staff whenever you're ready, please?
Yes, would you all raise your right hand, be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the comments and testimony you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that's Ms. Sigmund, Mr. Espinoza, Mr. Creel, Mr. Cameron. Did I get everybody? Because.
Black and Matt Ward.
And Tanya.
Tanya, okay. Ready? Okay.
Thank you. Any correspondence? Lindsay, you're muted.
Sorry about that. We have one item that was carried this evening. At this time, you want me to go through the agenda so I can point out the one that
Sure.
we're not hearing. Okay. All right, so outside of the case listed under adjournments, all cases are going forward except for item number 13. That's case Z2138. That's 39 Van Wagenen, application for a minor site plan with devariances. That is carried to the October 14th regular meeting with preservation of notice. So everything else is going forward. So that's items 10, 11, 12, and 14.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so Vinnie, I guess we're gonna move to the reorganization. So we need before we do that?
I didn't hear what you said, Josh.
Oh, I was gonna say, I think we're moving to the reorganization unless there's anything else we need to do before that. So if anyone wants to nominate people for positions, I think that's what we're doing.
Um, I would like to make a motion to give it as it is. You are the chairman, Kate, the vice, and whatever the other position is.
Secretary, and now we have a new position.
I'd like to nominate Francisco for Deputy Director. Deputy Secretary.
Lindsay, is that in conjunction with Cameron? Or is Francisco gonna take over that role?
Well, if he's nominated and all that, then yeah, I think that was the intention.
Then, okay, great.
Yeah, um, I, even though I'm happy to be renominated, I think that I have served in the capacity as both Chair and Vice Chair for probably way too long now. I can always be available to pinch hit, but I am, but I think it's appropriate that we get some new blood in the Vice Chair seat at least, so.
Okay.
I'm happy to, I mean, I don't know if I can, but if I can nominate, you know, Rich for Vice Chair.
I would too.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'd second.
But unless you like nominate other people for Chair, I mean, I don't know, I can't nominate myself.
Well, you've already been nominated. And Kate was nominated.
I accept the nomination.
Great.
Excellent.
Kate abdicated.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you very much. For all your dedicated years of services to us.
And just so rounding out the reorganization, Lindsay is still our secretary. I don't know if we nominated her, but I'm assuming we want to do.
Really, I think that's why it was everybody's same. And then we added the Deputy Secretary.
Right.
And then we, Kate stepped down and they nominated me. They covered everybody, if I'm correct.
So those are the nominations. Should we just vote on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Congratulations, Rich, Josh, Lindsay, and Francisco. Where'd you go, Francisco?
Congratulations.
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 We can at some point get together in person and celebrate being in person. So we'll see.
Sounds good.
Maybe we could get some sandwiches.
I think we could do better than sandwiches, Rich.
That would be nice. All right, well, let's move on.
Okay. Francisco got the best job. First day here, and he's already, you know, an officer. Um, okay, proceeding, we're, did you say on the record that we're carrying case Z20-001, address 184 Summit Avenue? That'll be carried to October 14th with preservation of notice?
I did not say that on the record, so thank you.
Okay, then we're gonna proceed with new business, case Z20-101. The address is 224 Freeman Avenue.
Okay, switching over, Stephen.
So, um, I know that I am the person that said I wasn't gonna show, and then I showed up for the meeting this evening. So I am happy to not participate unless there's another fellow commissioner who has another pressing potential conflict.
Anyone?
Anyone? Anyone?
Everyone, Kate, everyone else is excited to.
Okay. All right.
Okay, you abdicating and now you're vacate.
I know. I know. I know. I'm gonna watch baseball.
Oh, God. It's gonna be a rainier. Don't worry about it.
It's raining. It's raining.
I'm a Mets fan. Very good. Okay.
The record, we have seven commissioners. Commissioner Donnelly has vacated the meeting.
And can I just ask everybody, if you're not talking, please mute? You're getting some background noise. All right, thank you. It's not you, Josh.
Hi. Mr. Joseph, I think, did you call to your full team? We have Jeff Lewis and we have Sam Bellamy. Do we have Sam? Yeah, at least I see a blank screen.
I'm here trying to get the camera going.
Perfect. Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, everybody, for the working with you, Francisco. 224 Freeman, this has been carried several times, so I'd just like to confirm for the record that our notices from, I believe, July 22nd are.
Mr. Joseph, yes, we've looked at your notices, your affidavit, the notice of publication, and I'm not sure we, it's been carried so long. I don't think we ever marked it, but Bridget, if we haven't marked it, let's mark it for this evening. I think you have it in front of you somewhere.
Okay, this will be day one for tonight.
Perfect, thank you. So 224 Freeman Ave., this is a 50 by 100 lots located mid-block on Freeman Avenue. It's a dead-end street. The property, the property is currently developed with a legal three-family dwelling in the R1 zone, so it's a legal non-conforming pre-existing use. The applicants proposing to subdivide the lot into two conforming lots, 25 by 100 each, and construct a new two-family dwelling on the vacant lot, keep the existing building. We're here at the zoning board for a subdivision, which is unusual because when you subdivide a property that has a pre-existing non-conforming use, it's considered an expansion of that non-conforming use, even though we're not actually expanding that three-family building. It's still a devariance for that, so that's why we're here. We have two experts. We have Jeff Lewis, our architect, who will walk you through the plans. I think they're pretty simple. And because this is a devariance, we do have some planning testimony. So let's get Jeff sworn in and we can dive right in.
Is your right?
Okay.
Right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Oh, too fast, Jeff, okay. There you go, slow down.
Yes.
Just state and spell your full name for the record.
Jeffrey Lewis, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y-L-E-W-I-F.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my license is active and in good standing. Accept your qualifications. Thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna move on and share my screen. And bring up my plans. Okay, so 224 Freeman, this is, as was mentioned, a 50 by 100 lot. We're located on Freeman Avenue, which is a one-block dead-end street located in between Lincoln Park and Holy Name Cemetery. In the center of the drawing here, we have the existing site survey. It's showing on the left side our existing three-story, three-family building, which we, which will be remaining. And then on the right side of the lot, an existing garage, driveway, and curb cut, which we will be removing and replacing. And I want to start by just talking a little bit about the front of the property here, because there's a little bit of a strange situation on this entire block. As you can see, our stairs, and then there's this low brick wall that extends across the entire property. All of this is located in the city right-of-way, like five feet in the city right-of-way. And this is actually a common occurrence. This is basically the entire street, this entire block has the same situation. It's a current, it's a line that goes down the entire street. So you can see the property line is actually here. The existing building is set back five inches from that property line to the front of the deck, and then our stairs project out into that space. So moving on to what we're proposing, dividing the lot in half, as was mentioned, we're leaving this building the same. On the proposed new lot, we're doing a new three-story, two-family building. And this building will be set back one foot, two inches from that front property line to match the building on the right, which is the nearest existing conforming use. In the front of the building, we're proposing a new 10-foot curb cut with a new curb as well, two new street trees, new sidewalks. And then as far as that wall I mentioned, we are removing most of it. We're leaving only the small section here, which is in front of the existing building. And the other thing we're going to do here is, right now, if you look at the existing, behind that wall, this is the city property, but it's just concrete. And we're going to break that concrete up and provide a planting area with a new American holly tree. So in total, we'll have three new trees in the front. We're proposing new permeable pavers around both sides of the building and along the back of the building. And then a very large lawn area for a rear yard and new shrubs along the back property line of both properties. This is, these are the floor plans for the new two-family that we're proposing. Starting at the left, at the ground floor, we have the two-car garage with trash area inside, sprinkler room.
Sir, with what inside, sir?
Aye. There's a trash room inside, I apologize, and a sprinkler room, as this is a fully sprinkled building, and then some utilities. At the front, this is the main entry to the building. We go upstairs to the second floor where we have apartment number one. This apartment is a 1,623 square foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath apartment. All of that, most of that is located on the second floor. We also have a stair at the back that goes downstairs to the rear section of that first floor, where we have a rec room with washer dryer, half bath. And this space also provides apartment number one with direct access to the garage and out to their rear yard. Continuing up those stairs to the third floor, we have apartment number two. This is a 1,399 square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath apartment. We have basically the same layout as the apartment below, except where we had the staircase, we replaced that with washer dryer and utilities. This stair actually doubles back on itself and goes up to the roof, where we have a stair bulkhead and a roof deck. The roof deck is 570 square feet of patio area, and then 570, excuse me, 587 square feet of green roof trays. And these are set back at 16 feet in the back and 15 feet in the front to provide a buffer at the front and the back of the building for the roof deck. These are the proposed elevations. The main finish of the front of the building is a dark gray brick. We also have this large bay, which is wrapped in metal panels. The garage door is a dark gray fiberglass door. The front door is also a dark gray fiberglass door, although most of the door is actually transparent glass. The cornice is also fiberglass, however, that's painted black. And then this is, what we see here is the bulkhead roof beyond, and that's going to be a black standing seam metal roof. But you could see from the side elevation, it's set back pretty far. That's not something you're going to really see from the street. And then looking at the side of the buildings and the rear of the building, the only difference here is the main finish is a light gray vinyl siding. Moving on, these are the existing building plans. These are not changing. Starting at the first floor, the first floor is all apartment one, and then apartment one also has a stair that goes down to the whole front half of the basement. So there are two bedrooms up on the first floor, two bedrooms in the basement. In total, this is a 1,410 square foot, four-bedroom, two-bath apartment. Also in the basement, there is a shared storage and utility area and a laundry room for the building. And these rooms are both accessed by the second staircase, which you get to from the side alley of the building. Moving on to the second floor, apartment number two takes up this entire floor, and this is a 1,005 square foot, two-bedroom, one-bath apartment. And then at the third floor, which is the attic level, is apartment number three, and this is a smaller 580 square foot, one-bedroom, one-bathroom. Looking at the existing elevations, again, we're not making any changes here. Uh, the existing finish on all four sides is blue vinyl siding. All of the windows are white vinyl windows. And then the other finish that we have is the front porch. We have the original red brick, red brick piers, and then the low wall that we're not showing that is located at the front here, which is also red brick. So, thank you very much. That's actually my presentation of the Architecturals. I'm happy to answer questions either now or after planning testimony, whichever works best for you guys. Jeff, if you could just go, the site plan might be best for this, but we do have that small front yard landscaping variance. If you could just show practically why we're asking for that. Sure. Again, and that's why I did, I did try to mention that our front yard setback there is only one foot, two inches. So we're asking for for a variance, but as you can, I mean, this is our front yard. So I mean, we are squeezing a little planting area here and a little planting area here, but there's really not much that you can do in 14 inches. So that's why we're asking for that variance. Great, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Do you have a planner? So if there's no questions, we'll move on to Sam, get him sworn in.
Hi.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Samuel Bellamy, S-A-M-U-E-L, Bellamy, B-E-L-L-A-M-Y.
Thank you.
And my license is current and in good standing.
Accept your qualifications.
Great. So getting right into the variants, the variances that we're asking for tonight, this property is in the R1 district. Currently, it's an oversized lot, 5,000 square feet, 50 feet wide by 100 feet deep, and has an existing non-conforming three-family, three-unit building on the lot. So we are proposing to subdivide the lot into two 2,500 square foot lots, meeting the minimum dimensional requirements for an R1 district lot, 25 feet wide by 100 feet deep, 2,500 square feet. Then we are proposing a conforming two-family building on the one proposed subdivided lot. We will be maintaining that three-unit building, and that's what triggers the D2 variance in this case for an expansion of a non-conforming use. So in this case, we are reducing the size of the lot, therefore triggering this D2 variance. So with that, the existing three-unit building will meet both the building coverage and lot coverage requirements. With the subdivided lot, we'll have a building coverage of 42% and a lot coverage of 70%, and that meets the maximum. That's within the maximum requirement of 60% and 85% respectively. We will also be meeting the minimum required side yard setback. From that subdivided lot line, we will have a two-foot, five-inch side yard setback. The proposed building will have a three-foot, one-inch side yard setback, so combined, there will be a five-foot, over a five-foot setback between buildings, meeting that intent of that side yard setback requirement. There's no bulk changes to the building at all, so the existing front yard setback and rear yard setback will be maintained, both meeting those requirements. So with that, we are, as Jeff went into, we are proposing the landscaping improvements in the front yard of the, in front of the existing three-unit building, with the landscaped area, removing some concrete and impervious surface. And we are also proposing a new street tree. So with that, it is my opinion that the site can accommodate the existing three-unit building, even with the reduction in lot size. Getting into some, promoting the purposes of zoning, the proposed development and subdivision is consistent with the scale, density in the surrounding area, consistent with that residential character, and will promote the general welfare consistent with purpose A. We are providing conforming setbacks and building coverage, consistent, allowing for light air and open space, consistent with purpose C. And then we are proposing improvements to the streetscape with new street trees in front of both lots. That's, that will promote a desirable visual environment, along with appropriate infill development, consistent with purpose I. Getting into that one bulk C variance that we are asking for, for the front yard landscaping, the requirement is a minimum of 30% when there's a driveway, which we are proposing for the new two-unit building. So we're proposing 18.6%. As Jeff walked through, this is really a minor front yard area. We actually are reducing the overall lot coverage on the lot by about 20 square feet. We're proposing the green roof trays, street trees, and some landscaping in the rear yard. So with that, it's my opinion that this variance can be granted, and that the benefits would outweigh the detriments. Getting into the negative criteria, it's my opinion that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. You're creating two conforming lots in the R1 district, providing for appropriate infill development. You're improving the impervious coverage and landscaping, so you're consistent with, you won't have any stormwater runoff. And likewise, it's consistent with the zone plan and zoning ordinance, so there won't be any substantial detriment there. Again, R1, R1 district, we're maintaining the three-unit building and proposing the conforming two-unit building. So with that, I think that the project meets both the positive and negative criteria. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have, so.
Great, thank you so much, Sam. And hopefully to answer the new Vice Chair's question, we did send out notices, everybody within 200 feet by certified mail. But we also sent out a notice by regular mail. There's no formal community association in this little nook of Freeman Avenue that I was aware of. I did hear from one of the neighbors by email. I put my email phone number, address on those regular mail letters that I sent out. There were two questions that this neighbor had. One, whether the new construction is going to be attached to the existing. The answer to that's no. And two, why can't we push the building back to accommodate more front yard landscaping? That's for the new construction. We certainly can do that, but that would trigger a variance for the front yard setback. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay, Mr. Joseph, you dropped the gun on me.
Tried to get ahead of you. Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions for either Mr.? In none, we're gonna open this to the public, and Lindsay, if you.
I'm sorry, Josh, you're going in and out. Does anybody else hear that?
Yes.
Or not hear that? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to turn off my video, right? I will, you know, Bridget, let me know. If it continues to be an issue, I will leave and reset my internet and come back, and hopefully that helps.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna open this up to the public. Lindsay, can you kind of tell people how they can call in and kind of what the rules are? You know, we're gonna give people three minutes to, you know, say whatever they want to say, either question or comment. You know, feel free, if someone else has already said what you've said, to say, I agree with the last commenter, and keep it really short. And Commissioner Shadid is gonna be the keeper. So he'll let you know when you have one minute left, and then when your time is up.
And a reminder, only on this case.
Yes, please only call in for this one, because we'd love to hear from you on other applications, but only during that application. So, Rich, do you want to remind them what we're talking about, so that they only call in for this?
All right, well, the case is for, let me just get my for 224 Freeman Avenue. This is our case that we're hearing now, and if you have any questions or statements about this case only, Lindsay will direct you on how to call in, but it will be only for this case alone. After that, if you have a follow-up case, you'll be able to do it at the time of that case.
Thank you. Yes, if you have any questions or comments. Yeah, thank you. So if anyone has any questions or comments for 224 Freeman, you would dial, if you're calling in, you would dial star nine. That'll show us that your hands raised, and you have a question or comment. But if you're on a laptop or a computer, you just go to the bottom of your screen and click raise hand, and that'll let us know that you have a question or comment, and then you'll have three minutes. So I guess we'll give it a couple seconds, but at this time, I don't see any hands raised. I still don't see any hands. And most people are on a computer or laptop. There's only one person phoning in, so.
Motion to close?
Yeah, let's close the public portion of the application. And then we'll just move on to staff.
Second.
Okay, I was the city planner that handled this case. Firstly, I was going to ask that the applicant agreed to the stock conditions that are in the staff report dated July 22nd in the year 2021. Do you agree with those conditions, Mr. Joseph?
The applicant agrees.
Okay, um, yeah, so firstly, the applicant's professional planner's testimony covered all the bases that planning staff wanted to hear covered. The applicant and their team worked extensively with staff to, you know, try to bring this property as close as possible to the conforming standards of the R1. We did put in some landscaping where we could. We doubled down on street trees. We only got one curb cut. And as far as the existing three units goes, it's been there for quite some time. And it hasn't had any type of negative effect on the adjacent property owners from what research we've done. And for that reason, planning staff is recommending approval.
Does anyone have any questions for staff?
All right. Josh, you're breaking up.
Uh.
There you go.
I'll be real quick, so. I'll, I'll be real quick, so, and then I'll, I'll turn off and on between these, but, uh, does anyone have any questions, uh, for staff at this time, uh, or the applicant? Or alternatively, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on approval on Z twenty dash one-on-one with the staff conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll do roll. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid. Hey, Commissioner Shadid.
Ahmed, you're on mute.
On mute. Sorry about that. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Arugio.
Sonya, you're on mute, I think.
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chair McCormick.
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
Thank you. Good luck with the project. What, we're gonna proceed with case Z twenty dash zero-two-two. Uh, the address is two eight-two Summit Avenue. And, and please note and correct for the record, um, that on the agenda, it was listed as case Z twenty dash zero-eight-eight. So it should be zero-two-two. So Mr. O'Connell and team. Great, I'm gonna leave and come back, but start getting situated.
Okay.
But Mr. O'Connell, before you start, we can mark your notices. I don't think we did that the last time.
Correct.
David, your proof of service and notice of publication. Bridget will mark that as a one for this application.
The A one for Z two oh zero-two-two.
We'll make a moment for Josh to, uh, log back in.
Fine.
Wherever he is.
Jean, who else is presenting this evening? So I can get them switched.
Sure. Alan Feld will be the architect and Sam Bellamy will be the planner.
All right, makes that easy.
So can we swear a minute in the meantime?
Here's Josh, so.
Yep.
So your first witness, uh, Mr. O'Connell is.
Will be Alan Feld, my architect.
Okay. I see his name. I don't see Alan.
Here I am.
Yes.
There you are. Mr. Feld, would you raise your red hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Alan Feld, A-L-A-N-F-E-L-D.
Okay, you're going in and out a little also. Uh, I'm sure it has to do with the storm, but just in case I'm, you know, waving it.
Okay.
Before I start with Alan, I'd just like to put on the record a couple of facts. The applicant, I'm not saying, purchased this property in nineteen eighty-five. So he's lived here for thirty-six years or lived there for many years. He doesn't live there anymore. And he lived there with his family. When he purchased the property, it was an existing three-family building. He did no work in this property to create three units. The three units were there from nineteen eighty-six. What happened in twenty nineteen, there was an inspection for a little outhouse that was being taken down. And the inspector, uh, noticed the three units and gave him violation, saying that it was a two-unit building. When my, uh, the applicant found this out, he, uh, retained me to come to the Board of Adjustment to, so that the unit would be made legal. And that's pretty much the history of how we got here. The home is located in a row of sixteen homes on Summit Avenue. And, uh, at this point, I think three of the homes are one family. Five of the homes are two families and eight of the homes are, uh, three families. So just with that out of the way, Alan, uh, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And you're licensed a car?
Yes, it is.
Okay, would you please take the, uh, commissioners through the plans?
Let me try to share my screen. If I can do that.
Uh, and we accept your applications. Mr. Feld has been here many times.
Thank you. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, um, two eighty-two is an existing, uh, three-story masonry building with a, a livable basement. The property is approximately eighteen and, uh, four is wide by a hundred and forty feet deep. And that's a typical-sized lot on this section of Summit Avenue. So that's the, that's the site, site plan and that's the location on Summit Avenue. Let me go to the, the next the floor plans. So the existing and the, what I call the proposed floor plans are, there's no changes to the existing floor plans. The basement unit has a separate entrance underneath the, the front steps. There's a living room, a kitchen, a storage area, a study area, and a bedroom and a door out to the rear and one bathroom. On the first floor, you come up the, uh, front steps. Uh, there's a vestibule, there's a door into the living room, there's a kitchen and two bedrooms with a bath in the rear. And on the third floor, you continue up the steps. On the third floor, you come into the unit, there's a kitchen, living room, uh, front bedroom, a bathroom in the rear and two bedrooms also in the rear. These are all existing conditions, um, existing layouts. They all meet, uh, building codes. The first floor is about nine hundred square feet. The second, um, unit is about seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred square feet and the, the top floor is about seven hundred and fifty square feet. The basement has an eight-foot ceiling. The, let's say the first floor has a ten-foot ceiling and the top floor has a, a nine-foot ceiling. And that's, that's what's there.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Feld. I, I have no further questions. Does the board have any questions now or would you wait till I put my planner on?
Let's hear from the planner first.
Okay, sounds great. That'll be Sam Bellamy.
And I would remind Mr. Bellamy, he remains under oath. We can't hear you, Josh.
Um, I, I was only saying what you were saying, that he remains under oath from the prior, um, application and we accepted his qualifications. So he's already qualified as an expert today in this meeting and he continues to be so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna share, I'm gonna share my screen and pull up the plans.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, so we are in the R one district, um, which, um, permits predominantly one and two-family homes. Um, as Mr. O'Connell mentioned, um, this, this building has operated as a three-unit building, albeit illegally, or not legally. It, but it is consistent with really the, the character and density in this area. So the, the site is particularly well-suited for a three-unit building. We aren't proposing any bulk changes to the building, so it really will remain consistent. Here you could see, and I'm referring to sheet A one of the architectural plans. You have a couple of four-unit buildings towards Mercer Street, um, adjacent to, to our property. There are some two-unit buildings, um, heading south along Summit Avenue, and then you get into a row of three-unit buildings. So really, on this block, the average density is seventy, uh, sixty-seven units per acre. The, uh, the, the density that we're proposing with the, with the three-unit building, um, would be fifty units per acre. This, this lot is, um, slightly larger than your standard twenty-five hundred square feet, um, at two thousand six hundred twenty, uh, twenty-five square feet. And then also we, this layout of the existing building really, um, promotes a, a three-unit. There's a separate entrance for each of the units. The basement has a separate entrance, um, from outside. That, that basement level is, uh, partially above grade, so you do have full windows allowing for light and air into that unit. Um, and really, as it is today, um, there's full kitchens, bathrooms and utilities, um, gas meters for each of the, each of the units. As Mr. Feld mentioned, um, the floor heights are also consistent floor heights that meet building code. So really, all these units can operate, um, they're appropriately sized and appropriate layouts, um, to be, to maintain as a, as a three-unit, um, building. With that, uh, I, I think this, this project does promote, um, the purposes of municipal land use law. It's consistent with the residential character of the area, um, the density in the area and will promote the general welfare consistent with purpose A. Again, the density is consistent with, with other buildings along Summit Avenue here, even though it is in the R one, uh, R one district, there are multiple, multi-family buildings, so this will promote, um, a population density consistent with the area, consistent with purpose E. It's my opinion that there won't be any substantial detriment to the general welfare or zone plan. Um, again, residential use in the R one district, um, it's operated as a three-unit building. Um, and it's consistent, um, with all the bulk standards of the R one district. And it's, um, this will be maintaining an appropriate density. I mean, with that, I, I, I think that really concludes my testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions? Or any of the experts? Okay, um, we're gonna open up to the public. Lindsay, do you see anyone? Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
Um, I don't see any hands raised, but if anyone is here for two eighty-two summit, if you have any questions or comments, you would click raise hand at the bottom of your screen, uh, or if you're calling in, you would dial star nine. Again, I don't see any hands raised for two eighty-two summit.
Okay, so then we're gonna close, um, the public portion of the application. Staff, are there any, um, comments?
Just, just for transparency's sake, um, in looking at this application, uh, and I didn't say it in my staff report, but the, Jean, uh, gave me the, uh, the applicant's tax, you know, records for the property and, uh, explained the situation, uh, through the owner's, um, words and, uh, it's, it's a tricky situation because I know we approve a lot of these in a lot of these situations, but he also, in transparency, he also owns another building nearby. That's like the reverse of this, where it's like, he has two bedrooms, two units and it's legal two units. But, you know, in this situation, uh, given that there were three, um, there's three gas meters, there's three water connections, um, it seems like no new work was done, so I don't see the issue, uh, with granting the variances.
Okay, and, and Tim, when you mean, when you say that there's another property, I mean, what I think it sounded like Jean was saying was, but I don't want to speak for him or the applicant. Did it look to you when you looked at tax records that, that this has been the same for thirty years? And, and the, the case of where there were three units here, whether it was legal or, or not, there'd been three units here before this, uh, owner started owning the property thirty years.
Yeah, and, and actually, to expand further upon that, uh, Tanya and I, uh, looked at the, um, the tax card and in nineteen seventy, I believe it was in the mid-seventies, uh, the property was listed as three, um, bedrooms, that were three units. So that kind of put this to bed, in my opinion.
Okay. Thanks. Does anyone have any questions, um, for staff? Or for the applicant, or does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion on Z twenty dash zero-two-two, which is three eighty-two Summit Avenue for approval, with any staff conditions that we provided.
Second.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Arugio.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Vice Chairman McCormick.
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs.
Yes.
All in favor, motion passes.
Chris, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with the project.
Okay.
And we're gonna proceed with case Z twenty-one dash zero-one-one. The address is three twenty-one NJ State Highway Route four forty.
Cam, who's covering this case? The attorney? I don't see Steve, Steven.
Yeah, it should be, uh.
Is it Michael? Okay, that name looks familiar. And if there's anyone else presenting for this case, if you could click raise hand, so I could promote you to panelist.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Let me know when you're ready.
We're ready, but, uh, Bridget, I don't know if you hear that.
Yeah, I hear the game going on in the back.
Thank you. My name is Mike Bonner, uh, appearing on behalf of
Hold up. Mr. Bonner.
LLC. We have with us our engineer, our, our architect, a representative of the
Mr. Mr. Bonner.
And, uh, a
I don't know if he's, I'm not I'm talking.
A way of introduction, this is a, um, a vacant site.
Can you?
Are you not hearing me? Cause I, I can't hear anyone else.
No, we can too, but it doesn't appear that you can hear us. Uh, the court reporter was asking you to stop for a moment. She wanted to say something to you, but you kept speaking. Can you hear us?
All right, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. My question was, can you hear us?
I can now. I couldn't before.
Okay, great. But Mr. Bonner, before we start, let's just say we've, we've, uh, reviewed your notices, your affidavit, your proof of, uh, publication, and Bridget, we're gonna mark that as a one.
Okay, this will be a one, and Mr. Bonner, you're going to have to repeat everything that you said. In- including you're, you're introducing yourself.
I'm gonna make it even shorter.
It couldn't be any shorter since I didn't get anything. Okay.
Before you start, I was just gonna also ask, uh, whoever is totally fine to play a radio, television in the background, but, but can you at least like mute yourself or mute the game, um, so we don't hear it, um, on the record?
Okay. Everybody stop playing Solitaire. Is that what you're, you're saying?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, my name is Mike Bonner. I work, uh, for Javabound Wordgaff. I work with Steve Hale. Steve is in, I believe, Woodbridge tonight. Um, we have people all over the place. I represent the applicant, would be twenty-one Jersey City LLC. We have a representative of the applicant with us tonight. We also have our engineer, Mike Diplo. Uh, we have our, our architect, Andrea Gomes, and we have a professional planner, Nicholas Craviano. Very briefly, we have a vacant former retail site, which we intend to refurbish and repurpose. The applicant, WIBBY twenty one, has leased the entire site. The application tonight is for roughly half of the existing building. And the engineer will describe the improvements being made to the site. The architect will briefly describe the architectural plans, but everybody pretty much knows what a planet fitness looks like. And we have Chelsea Schubert, a representative of the applicant, and she will present basic operational information for the site. So without delaying it any further, I'd like to introduce Mike Dipple as our our first expert.
To describe Can I ask an initial question?
Yes.
So I see that this is a you sent a signage variance, at least on the agenda. Is this a use variant? Because the the health use is not a specified one for the zone?
No, not exactly. Health clubs are permitted. The size of health clubs is restricted, so the use variance is related to the size.
Okay, so it's a permitted use and you need you want more size.
Four thousand square foot health clubs are permitted. Ours is considerably larger than that. But yes, you know, it's a contemplated use in the zone, repurposing existing retail sites that are are vacant. Makes a lot of sense.
No, no, I'm only trying, I'm only trying to help you by saying this is a permitted use in in the zone. And you're just looking for more more space and and we've got the space available. So with that in mind, and and this is your application, take all the time you need, but I fully expect no trouble. So you could be as as succinct as you'd like to be.
With with that, I have concluded my case and feel free to vote.
From the planner.
You need something to draft the resolution, right? With that, we'll we'll have everybody make a very short presentation, walk you through the plans and and we can move along. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, your turn.
Introduced and sworn?
Yep, okay.
Okay, now I see him. You're raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it is, I do.
And please state and spell your full legal name and spell it for the record.
Yes, it's Michael Dipple, D I P P L E. My professional address is sixty six Grand Avenue, Englewood, New Jersey. I can, I can qualify myself. I'm a, I haven't been in front of Jersey City in quite a while. I've been doing this for thirty years now. I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor of science from Rutgers University, and I've been accepted hundreds of times throughout the state of New Jersey in Superior Court.
And your license is current?
My license is current. I'll be testifying as a civil engineer.
Thank you. Separate qualifications, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think I think the best thing is for me to just start sharing the plans. I'm going to share my screen, so you should see our preliminary and final major site plan for proposed building renovation at three twenty one Route four forty. It's waterfront plan development district, the WPD. Currently, I'm going to go to, this is sheet CO one on your screen. I'm going to go to sheet CO two, and that's entitled Existing Conditions and Demolition Plan. And this is an existing shopping center that used to have the National Wholesale Liquidators, I believe, might have been the last tenant. And they occupied the entire site, I believe. This application is only for a portion of the existing building, as Mr. Bonner said. That portion of the building is here with this checkered hatch. We label that on sheet CO two as interior and exterior building renovations. That is the portion of the building that Planet Fitness would like to occupy with their fitness center. We do, I'm going to move on to sheet CO three. This is the overall site plan. And again, that gray area is the portion for the Planet Fitness. So the site is eight point two five acres. There is another use on the site. There's a Delta gas station in the front, right along four forty. The shopping center sits right behind that. There's access to four forty ingress on the north side. So the the right side of the page is north, as you can see the north arrow down here in the right hand corner. And we'll say the left side of the page is south, and of course, east and west, up or down. So again, there are a hundred and sixty eight parking spaces on the property. We do have some areas that we would like to improve. Some of the asphalt's in bad shape. The site hasn't been occupied or maintained very well for for quite some time. That's what those little black spots are on your screen. Those areas we would like to repair, and that's noted here. If I go to my zoning table, which is in the upper right hand corner, I list the WPZ, WPD zone requirements. And you can see that we comply with nearly all of them, except for the perimeter setback where thirty feet is required. The existing building is set back in the rear. There was an addition or a piece of the building that was set back twelve and a half feet to the rear. So that's an existing nonconformity that we would maintain. Otherwise, everything else complies with the zoning. We are required sixty, excuse me, eighty one point six one parking spaces. We have a hundred and sixty eight proposed, and we are required ten point nine bicycle parking spaces. This application proposes an additional twelve parking spaces. I'm sorry, bike parking spaces. Regarding signage, I do have signage compliance, but I think I'm going to leave that for the architect to discuss. We are seeking one variance for letter height for a Planet Fitness sign, but I think you're going to hear more about that when the architect comes up.
I think the the planner is going to touch on that, Mike.
A planner, I'm sorry. And then we are proposing some landscaping, some river birds trees, four of them throughout the site to try to try to add a little bit of landscaping. They would be here on the west side of the property. Right now, there's, there are some trees in some islands on the site, you know, as it as it exists today. Going to try to maintain those. We are proposing to do a lot of new striping, kind of just give it a little bit of an upgrade, put a few new ADA spaces in, so we're fully compliant with that respect. Clean up the site, of course. There is, if you went to the site today, you would see a lot of overgrown areas. Looks like areas where perhaps people are entering and perhaps staying there overnight. So there's a lot of garbage and stuff on the site that would be cleaned up. And we are proposing a trash enclosure to the rear of the site. It's ten by eighteen with a fence around it, and that would be able to handle two dumpsters in the back with a, it will have a wood fence around it. I think that's the bulk of the site improvements. As I go through my set, we just have construction details, the bike rack and, you know, some site improvement details, fences, sidewalks, inlets, things like that. So not not a lot being done here, other than just Planet Fitness trying to come in and occupy a portion of the existing building. So.
Just a couple of things. You, we are also proposing, isn't there a fenced area that will be removed?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm perhaps I'm I'm moving too quick, but yes. Well, we we have an area in the front, unless this changed, we have a to an area in the front to be repaired, if that's what you're referring to, Mr. Bonner.
Correct.
We have an area, a fenced area here, which our plan currently shows to repair and to paint. That's part of the site that is definitely in need of repair right at the front of the property. But but that that that's where we are right now.
And I believe in the engineering report, the engineer, Ms. Huang, talked about a lighting plan. That will be part of the final plans, won't it?
Yeah, that's correct. We we did receive a letter on August eleventh, and that indicates perhaps showing some lighting and some illumination throughout the property. Some of the utilities should be shown on the plan, a few notes and few instructions to the applicant on how to proceed with construction if we're successful tonight. So yes, the applicant's willing to comply with all the comments in the August eleventh letter.
And adding them as a condition of approval is is no problem, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Dipple. Okay, we can proceed to the next expert.
Do you want me to go through all the witnesses and save the questions for the end?
Yes.
Great. Next would be Chelsea Schubert. She's with WIBBY twenty one and its parent company. She finds the sites on behalf of the parent company and is responsible for opening them and setting up the HR departments.
Chelsea.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Yep, it's Chelsea Schubert, C H E L S E A. Last name is S C H U B E R T.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And you can confirm what I said about your position with the company, that you are the person responsible for this project?
Yep, I am, yes. I'm regional manager with WIBBY twenty one, well DA Business Enterprise. We actually form LLCs for all of our gyms that we open. We currently have nineteen open in New Jersey. So yes, I try to, I find all the locations, I open them, and then I run the HR department for all of our locations, so.
Thank you.
To say we're, yeah.
And you're fully familiar with this particular application, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Why don't you tell us?
Yeah, so to say we're 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 beyond thrilled to come to Jersey City. We've been waiting for this for years, so to find this spot has been a blessing. We're just, the demographics, the residential developments going on around there, the building that's ready to be built already with the generous parking is amazing. So we're excited. Ownership, everyone is is beyond excited to get up and running. Just a couple of things, I'm sure most of you are are familiar with Planet Fitness. But typical gym, we have our cardio, our strength, circuit rooms. We also have a Black Heart Spa area that has tanning, hydro massage beds, massage chairs, all of that good stuff in this gym. This gym would be employing about fifteen to eighteen employees, ranging from managers to customer service reps, to cleaners, to trainers. So we're looking forward to getting some staff over there and up and running as well. Right now, with
Approximately, how many are on site at any given time?
Um, between three and four, depending on the shift.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so right now with COVID, we have reduced our hours. We're running Monday through Friday. We're running five AM to ten PM. Saturday and Sundays, we are running seven AM to eight PM. However, prior to COVID, and hopefully as the pandemic eases, we are looking to get back to twenty four seven for all of our clubs across the board. So we would be seeking approval for twenty four seven with this location as well. Typical peak times for our gym, just so you know, is six AM to eight AM, and then again, six PM to eight PM. And roughly, there could be between forty and fifty people there, cars, so to say. And that's during those peak times. So we have, the parking is substantial for what we need. Other than that, again, we're really looking forward to coming to Jersey City. And of course, if you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Thank you. And next, we have our architect, representative of our architect Andrea Gomes, senior project manager with Sargenti. You're on mute, Andrea.
Hi, everybody.
Hello. Would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, my first name is Andrea, spelled A N D R E I A. Last name Gomes, G O M E S.
Thank you.
And your your position with Sargenti, and please describe your familiarity with this project and your role and its design. Thank you.
I am a senior project manager with Sargenti Architects. We are one of the six authorized architects throughout the United States to do architectural plans for Planet Fitness. Our office handles about two dozen franchisees. I'm also the senior project manager for all corporate clubs that the brand builds itself. And for the specific franchisees as well.
Ms. Gomes, I don't want to interrupt you, except that I just want to have the clarification with Mr. Bonner. Are you being, are are we certifying, authorizing you as a as a licensed architect or some other capacity?
Have you, no, she's not an architect. She's a senior project manager for the architect, but she is very familiar with the plans and can explain them to the extent necessary for the application. We're not presenting her as an architect, but as a representative, thank you.
Okay.
You've testified before, correct, Andrea?
Yes, yes, I have.
Okay.
My last one was was actually two weeks ago, California, and I was up until later night because they started at seven PM. So yes, yes, I did.
I I think that makes sense. Finney, is there anything that we need to do in this in this instance?
No, I don't believe so. She's just going to testify as to the project. Let's hear it briefly.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to share my screen. And bring up the blends. Can everybody see this?
No, not yet, no.
No. Oh, okay, I think I figured it out. Okay.
Yeah, I was going.
Okay, good. Okay, so here we are. Okay, um, so this is a very large building. The building itself is about forty thousand square feet just within this limit here. We are going to occupy, Planet Fitness is proposing to occupy about half of it. There is a portion to the building to the left that we will not be performing any work in this area here. And then this is the vacant space that will remain unoccupied until it's either subleased or, you know, they find another tenant. But the space that will be Planet Fitness will utilize the existing entrance. We are removing one of the two sets of double doors, and we are introducing a new vestibule, a new entrance. You walk in through to the space, it leads you to this reception area where you check in. Behind this reception area, there is what we call the Black Heart Spa. This is an area that offers tanning, tanning units, as well as some massage chairs and massage beds. This is part of one of the member, the memberships that they offer. There's two of them. Outside, oops, sorry about that, outside of this area. If you continue down this way is the entrance to your locker rooms. Women's come first, comes first, men second. And back here are two typical workout rooms for Planet Fitness. So this area right here, we call this the functional training room. The area next to it is what we call the thirty minute workout room, where someone just wants to come in for a quick workout. This, you know, they could just come in here and do a full body workout. In the middle of the open gym area is a series of cardio machines. And then in front of that, in this area here, is what we call the selectorized circuit, and then our strength right up against our demising wall. This will be a full one hour rated wall separating these two units. So we're kind of preparing the space for the future, whatever that may bring next door. We have, we we comply with a one hour rated for separation between an assembly and a mercantile space. Back here on this corner here is where our utilities currently exist. We are proposing to keep this area as a utility room. keep this area as a utility room. Our second means of egress will be through this existing exit. We are, however, proposing a new door and new stairs. This is in a little bit of disrepair right now. But that's the only other way out of the building. So this is our entrance, and this is our our second means of egress. The building is fully sprinkled, and there's also a fire alarm system, so this complies with code. In terms of this just kind of shows you, this is our egress plan, shows you circulation, shows the the exit distances. If I move on to the next slide.
Andrea?
Yes.
Please, I think they understand how a gym functions, and and I think if maybe you can get to the exterior elevations and talk about what the building's going to look like and those improvements.
Yeah, so that's this one slide here. So before, they had, you know, just worked for the type of business they had before, they had two different sliding doors, set of sliding doors. We are proposed, proposing to remove one of them, so we can lead people to our vestibule and just replacing it with new glazing. The entire building will be painted new to match the existing storefront colors. So we're not proposing a change, we're just proposing to clean it all up and and with a brand-new, fresh paint, coat of paint. Our signage is going to go where the former tenant used to have their signage, so right above this canopy area here. And then to the side of that, you know, the the building extends quite a bit, this entire side area here will also be painted. So it's important to note that we're not just proposing to paint the front, we're proposing to paint the entire building.
Including the area where the fence is being removed, correct?
Exactly, exactly, including that area. And that area too, you know, if I go back to that, I think it's easier to see on this page here. So the area that is fenced in is this area over here. This is going to be removed, there's quite a bit of graffiti in there, all going to be cleaned up. Above here is where one of the signage, one of the science here signs is going to be located, but I'll leave that to the to the next person to discuss. But this entire portion here, all the way down, is going to be painted.
Okay. Thank you. And I know you can take down your drawing.
Okay.
Thank you. And our next our next professional is Nicholas Graviano, professional planner.
Do you affirm or swear that you will testify to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Yes, my first name is Nicholas with an H, last name is Graviano, G.R.A.V.E.S. in Victor, I.A.N.O. I'm a planner and partner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners with a business address of 101 Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Graviano. You've heard the testimony of the engineer and the architect. Can you give us a summation of the variances and the application? And provide the justification per se?
Yeah, just like to just get qualified by the board first.
Apologize.
Yes, hold a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city regional planning from Rutgers University, a law degree from Temple University, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, I also hold an AICP certification. I've testified before boards and governing bodies in sixteen different counties in New Jersey and over a hundred municipalities.
Thank you. Your license is current?
And my license is currently valid, yes.
Thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. Yes, based on the testimony by the architect and the engineer, quickly, the applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan approval with a D1 use variance and associated C variances for signage for property otherwise known as 321 Highway 440, known as Block 26102 Lot 4. With the D1 variance, the the city does allow health clubs less than four thousand square feet in all zones that permit retail uses. This zone is a zone that permits retail uses, so therefore a variance is required. The variant, the applicant is also requesting sign variances in that one primary and secondary facade sign are permitted. The applicant is proposing two facade signs and reuse of the existing freestanding sign. The freestanding sign is not newly proposed, it's simply going to get a new face in the existing box on the pole. One variance, I would also just like to highlight briefly, the applicant is requesting maximum height, ladder height of a little less than two feet, whereas one foot is permitted. That's due to the fact that the building sits sits back approximately three hundred and fifty feet from the roadway. In terms of the use variance, as Mr. Diplo indicated, this is an eight-point-two-acre lot. It contains existing commercial buildings and parking lots. This site is surrounded by numerous commercial uses, including the Stadium Plaza, Shopping Center to the north and other commercial uses to the west on Route 440. With the D1 use variance, the board has the power to grant such variance in particular cases and special reasons, that's the positive criteria of the D1 variance. And promotion of the general welfare is the zoning purpose which most clearly amplifies the meaning of special reasons. The applicant must also prove that there's no negative attributes to the project, no substantial detriment to the zone planner zoning ordinance in terms of the D1 variance with a particular suitability. The proposed use is in keeping with the established commercial land use patterns of the area. This is a use that has historically been located in retail and commercial centers with highway frontage. This building was built and designed in a way that can help accommodate the needs of a Planet Fitness use. The open configuration can help fit the program of the proposed health club facility. And has you heard by Mr. Diplo and Ms. Schubert that the site possesses ample off-street parking for the proposed use? It advances purpose A of the municipal land use law to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of lands, which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. It's an adaptive reuse of a vacant site, it brings vitality to a dormant shopping center. It provides employment opportunities and for area residents. And the use itself helps promote the public health and general welfare by providing a venue for health and for exercise. It also helps advance purpose G to provide sufficient space in appropriate location for a variety of commercial uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And I touched on that when I discussed particular suitability. And then lastly, it helps advance purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And that's done through the addition of landscaping and the cleaning up of the building and the site. Looking at the negative criteria, this proposal certainly will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. This proposal can be granted without substantial detriment to the zone plan. The zone plan seeks redevelopment efforts along Route 440 and also helps promote the comprehensive redevelopment of 440 and its proximity to area transportation networks and waterfront facilities. In terms of the zoning ordinance, the purpose of the planned waterfront development district is to identify areas where the redevelopment of commercial uses can occur in the area. The wide range of retail and other theaters and restaurants, uses of that like. This use is certainly consistent with those uses, so there's no impairment of the zoning ordinance. Moving on to the C variances for the signed quantity and the ladder height, they can be granted under the C1 and C2 criteria. C1 criteria due to the exceptional nature of the property. The freestanding site exists, and the three hundred and fifty-foot distance to the highway requires a ladder height that could be identified by motorists. With the C2 criteria, the proposal relates to a specific piece of property, it advances the purposes of zoning that I identified in the D1 analysis, A.G. and I. And relief can be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance as well.
Thank you, Mr. Graviano. That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. Does anyone from the board have any questions at this time for any of the witnesses? Okay, then we're going to open it up to the public. One seat, does it look like there's anyone?
I don't see any hands raised, but if anyone had any questions or comments, you would click hand, raise hand at the bottom of your screen, and if you're calling in, you would dial star nine if you have a question about this application.
This application only, which is 321 NJ State Highway Route 440. Okay, let's close this then. So we're going to close the public portion of this application. Staff, do you have any comments?
Yes, okay, so Cameron Black speaking on behalf of the staff. I would just firstly ask that their attorney agreed to the conditions stated in the August 2nd, 2021 Planning Staff Report. The conditions are listed on page three of the report. Does the applicant's attorney, speaking for the client, accept these conditions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, um. Planning staff is satisfied with the testimony regarding the D and C variances associated with this application. The applicant worked with staff to find, you know, and make improvements to the site to mitigate some of the existing conditions onsite where there's, you know, due to lack of care for the site because of a vacancy from the wholesale national retailer, which was there. Gosh, I don't know, maybe five years ago when it was last active. There's since been some degrade in the property, so we addressed those issues. And they are making landscaping improvements with trees that certainly will benefit the site. Planning staff sees that this is a fitting use for this area and, you know, personally happy to see this site get use out of it, an appropriate use. Planning staff recommends approval.
Thanks, Cam. Does anyone have any questions for staff or the witnesses or attorney at this time? If not, does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion on Z21-011 for approval with the staff conditions.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Arugia?
Yes.
Vice Chair McCormick?
Yes, I'd just like to say it'd be a pleasure to see this land. It's a nice show at the present time, and looking forward to seeing a little like upgrade like the Planet Fitness is planning on doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who just said something.
Okay, and Chair?
I think it was Bhavesh, I think, I don't, or someone was on a call.
Oh, okay, that wasn't for this. Okay.
And I apologize, I just called you Josh, Mr. Langston. Chair Jacobs, please.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Bridget, you want to take a break, or you want to try to for the best that we finish up very quickly with the last case?
I'll take a break.
Okay, so everyone will take a five-minute break. We'll see you soon. Chuck has said he's going to get through this project for seventy-one dwelling units very quickly when we get back.
All right, so my my camera's not working, I blinked out, so I don't know, but I'm still here.
Okay, we're on, we're off the record.
Okay.
We hear you, Sonya, just so you know.
Okay.
Chuck or anyone from his team, so we're ready to go, and all the commissioners are here.
Just let me know when we're on the record, Josh, please.
I think we just need Jake Modesto. So we still have seven commissioners, right, Phoebe?
Yes, we do.
Is everyone back?
It seems that way.
Okay.
So Mr. Harrington, this is case Z20-081.
Bridget, you were back on the record.
Yeah, I'm writing, thank you.
500 Communipaw Avenue LLC. So, Mr. Harrington, we have your notices, your affidavit, your proof of service, your notice of publication, and Bridget, we're going to mark that as A1 for this application.
Okay, that'll be A1 in evidence.
Hey, thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. So I just give a brief overview, and then I'm going to hand it off to our experts to walk it through. This board might be familiar with this property, not specifically the project, but there was one of the buildings, there was an issue as to whether or not it could be taken down, and we had an appeal on that, and that was heard before this board back, I think, in March. And this board, at the time, agreed with the the decision of the Historic Preservation Office. And one of the requirements was, you know, after knocking that down, try to incorporate something to acknowledge the history of Mr. Longo into the building, and you'll you'll see what we've done as part of this application. We think it's innovative, and it's certainly more than a plaque that that and we thought, we think it's fitting. So this project before you is 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 unique, the property is unique. It is a split-zoned project in that the frontage on Communipaw Avenue is in the neighborhood commercial zone. And then there is a a unique flag lot behind it that is in the R1 residential zone. So the project is proposed on both properties that crosses over both zones. We are proposing seventy-one residential units with ground floor commercial along Communipaw. And we also are pushing back the sidewalk, we're stepping the building back five feet to create a greater sidewalk there, which we think is an important element, that that was one of the things that evolved in our discussions with planning. We're also proposing six moderate-income affordable units as part of the project. And I just note that this application was filed before the IZO, the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, was adopted. So it was not subject to that, but my client proposed that as part of the overall project. And you'll see that the six units was not a random number, it really was it was twenty percent of the units that we are, we see as part of the R1 zone. We have approximately thirty of the units would sit in the R1 section of the project, so we're providing for six, that's about twenty percent. So now the board's probably aware, the IZO was overturned. But that really doesn't affect our proposal because we're proposing this as part, as part of the overall project as well. You'll see as part of it too, this kind of unique community room that we're proposing to honor John Longo's history, but we've also spoken with the Landmarks Conservancy, and the idea is to provide for rotating exhibits in conjunction with with the Landmarks Conservancy and other groups within Jersey City. And my client's proposing to have the community use that through like an online scheduling. And you know, maybe like, you know, a punch pad or a digital pad, so that it really can can become a fabric of of the immediate community. So we have been working on this for some time. We recently, most recently, had a community meeting in July of this year. We did make changes in response to community comments that that were about a year before that. We did make changes in response to community comments that, that were about a year before that where we increased parking. We've increased some setbacks. You'll see that the heights of the building, especially in the R1 zone, we, we specifically made it smaller and shorter to try to comply with the R1 regulations and massings as, as much as possible. So with that said, I'm, I'm going to hand it off to our civil engineer crew. He can speak to the site because it does have, you know, some unique characteristics and that is Jake Modesto from Stonefield Engineering.
Good evening, members of the board. Jake Modesto, last name is M O D E S T O W.
Yes, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record now that you're under oath.
Jake Modesto, last name is M O D E S T O W. With that, Stonefield Engineering and Design. My address is ninety-two Park Ave, Rutherford, New Jersey.
And Mr. Modesto has been qualified before the Jersey City Boards in the past. I'd ask that he be qualified as well.
Okay, we accept your qualifications. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm going to begin by sharing my screen for the property located at five hundred Communipaw. And the board can see my screen. You should be looking at sheet C1 of the plans prepared by my office. I really want to take the board for the general location of the property. It's block seventeen zero zero three, lots thirty-six through forty. It is a unique shaped parcel. As the board can see, it's on the north side of Communipaw containing point six six acres. The front portion along Communipaw Ave butts the areas within the north is the neighborhood commercial district. Or behind that is the residential R1 zone. Generally located with frontage on Park Street and Communipaw Ave. Now going through the existing conditions, she see two. This break allows us to look at some of the grading issues that we have or concerns we have on site. So we have a hundred and thirty-seven feet of frontage across Communipaw Ave with a six-foot grade change. Now, we also have a, almost a, almost a, we'll call it plateau of asphalt area leading back into our Panhandle or Flag Lot that leads out to the twenty-two feet of frontage that we have on Park Street. Now, the plateau area is elevated elevation forty-eight. The adjoining parcels, lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight along Prescott Street are actually elevated or a little bit below at elevation forty. So there's an eight-foot grade change that exists today in this elevated parking lot area. There is ample access to public transportation around the property with plenty of bus routes within, you know, a thousand feet of property. And what the applicant is looking to do is to raise everything on.
I'm sorry, I don't hear anything.
Yeah, me neither.
I think we lost the witness.
Looks like he's frozen.
Last thing I heard was raise.
Chuck, are you also frozen? I don't think so.
No, Chuck is not frozen, but he's on mute.
Yeah, now I'm now, I'm on muted. Let me text Jake. Oh, we did tell him we lost him.
Thank you.
Want to move on to your next witness and if he comes back, go that way?
Oh, we, I think we can do that if that's okay with the board.
Yes. Oh.
Okay, Anthony, you're up.
Hey, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Sure, that is Anthony Vandermark, A N T H O N Y Vandermark, he is a Victor, A N D E R M A R K. And my firm is located at three six zero fourteen Street, Oboka, New Jersey.
And Mr. Vandermark has been qualified many times before this board, so I'd offer him in that regard again.
Yes, we accept his qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Anthony, if you could want to jump in?
Yeah, absolutely. I am going to share my screen with the board. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Again, as Chuck had previously stated, and I'll try not to be redundant, we are proposing a a five-story with a four-story portion structure with seventy-one residential units, forty-seven parking spaces, two commercial retail spaces and a Longo Community Room. Subject site, as you can see here, Communipaw Avenue at a hundred and thirty-seven linear feet. The outline is the irregular lot that Jake had previously described. It's twenty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-seven square foot lot at point six six. It's substantial. The streetway to the east is Prescott Street. Our curb cut and the vehicular access point is on Park Street. And the intersection street coming directly into the front of our property is Arlington Avenue. Okay, subject site is still in red. We have a varied group of uses and structures within the immediate neighborhood. Up into the front of our property facing Communipaw, we have a one-story gabled roof structure that used to be a daycare and since been vacated. We have a two-story mixed-use structure. Also, five hundred Communipaw, as Chuck had previously had mentioned. We have two pre-existing curb cuts on Communipaw Avenue that are going to be removed. And we are adding two cars back onto Communipaw Avenue with that location. In the foreground right here on the sheet, you're looking at the freshman academy. It's a tall three-story, obviously educational use. Followed to the north of that is the Islamic School, which is directly across from our access point. Immediate to our, to our western portion of the site, you're looking at a, a series of three-story masonry, one and two families, followed by a taller four-story mixed-use structure. Directly to the north, again, along Park Street, you're looking at one and two families at two and three stories tall. Adjacent to us, working to the east, we have two-story mixed-use structures facing Communipaw Avenue. We are basically separated in between by a parking lot that's not included within the site. Backing up to us, as Jake had previously mentioned, at a lower elevation on Prescott Street, we have three-story, one and two-family house. In the foreground here, again, you're looking at the two-story five hundred Communipaw Avenue with the two curb cuts that are going to be removed along with the one-story gabled structure. Opposite side from the west looking east, again, one-story gabled structure and a two-story mixed-use structure scheduled to be removed. On Park Street, there is a twenty-two foot six inch pre-existing curb cut. We have chose to utilize this curb cut and use that for the ingress egress into our parking garage. It'll be centrally located on the site. In the background of that, you're looking at the four-story mixed-use multifamily building. Because of this frontage, we have no room to actually provide a street tree. We have chosen to put a street tree in the pre-existing planter box that's adjacent to our curb cut, so we are adding one new street tree to this pre-existing condition. Located within the site, and I'll just go from top left-hand corner and I'll work my way around clockwise. We, we have a pre-existing condition, which is a, is a surface grave parking lot, which is in the R1 section of the site. This, this portion of the lot is unsecured. We have some areas of fencing. We have some areas of not fencing and some areas of retaining wall as they back up to the Prescott and the Park Street properties. Working to the right is the retaining wall section. Prescott Street would be below this retaining wall. And on the bottom left-hand corner, you're looking at the chain length fence that looks down into the Prescott Street rear yards. And again, as Jake had previously mentioned, there's an eight-foot grade difference in between this part of the parking lot and the rear yards of Prescott Street. Top right-hand corner, again, as you can see, pre-existing parking lot that is not tied to any of the properties. This is more or less a, a, a unsecured free-for-all for whoever parks there. Bottom right-hand corner, you're looking at the side yard of the gospel church, which again is to the north side of our property. Unsecured, no fencing in between the two properties. And the bottom left-hand corner, you're looking at the base of the multifamily structure, which is on Park Street. Again, no fencing in between the two properties. Directly across the street, we have new construction in the NC at five oh three, five oh nine Communipaw Avenue. That's five stories and fifty-five feet in total height. So what we're proposing this evening is similar in height and scale of this structure that's being constructed as we speak. Giving you a general overview of the project. Again, we have one portion of the project that's in the NC and we're proposing a five-story portion of the structure totaling out at fifty-five feet in total principal height. That is permitted within the NC zone to the back portion of our proposal. We are proposing a four-story thirty-nine feet tall, which is in the R1 portion. Again, that volume or that height is permitted within the R1 zone. We are asking for an additional story there. And we'll get into how we have achieved this. Of the seventy-one residential units, we are proposing twelve studios, forty-one one bedrooms, fourteen two bedrooms and four three bedrooms. So we have, you know, a good varied separation of units of the seventy-one units that Chuck previously mentioned. We are proposing six affordable units there. We're proposing forty-seven parking spaces. Of the forty-seven parking spaces, we have twenty-eight of the mechanical lift system spaces with seventeen standard and we have two compact spaces included covered in both garages. We are proposing forty bicycle parking spaces within the building envelope. And as previously mentioned, we have two commercial retail spaces. One of them is at two thousand five hundred fifty-four square feet and the other one is at one thousand eight hundred twenty-three square feet. So we have a total of four thousand three hundred seventy-seven square feet of commercial retail fronting on Communipaw Avenue as part of this project. We are also proposing a three hundred and twenty-five square foot Longo Community Meeting Hall space. I'll get into that next. As previously mentioned, it's split zone in the R1 and the NC zone, NC being highlighted in red, the R1 being highlighted in blue. NC portion has eleven thousand thirty-seven square feet as part of the twenty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-seven portion of that parcel. That is thirty-eight percent of the parcel size. The R1 size has got one thousand, excuse me, seventeen thousand seven hundred fifty square feet, which is the equivalent of sixty-two percent of the overall site area. Building being proposed is a L shape in configuration with the portion in the NC almost spot on with what the NC District Regulations are. The portion in the R1 is multifamily, hence the use variance request. Just a few things of note of the portion of the building in the R1 section. On the base of the building, just to try to accommodate additional parking, we are at a building coverage of sixty percent. The R1 permits sixty percent building coverage. Above the first floor, floors two, three and four, we are proposing forty-five percent lot coverage or eight thousand one hundred and one square feet. So the R1 does permit sixty percent lot coverage. Our building volume above the first floor is actually fifteen percent below, but the volume could actually permit within the R1 if we were constructing one and two family housing here. So what we chose to do is actually centrally locate the multifamily within the R1 portion, giving a lot of light and air to the adjacent properties, both on Prescott Street and on Park Street to the west. The NC portion of our, of our site or of our proposal, again, we are at five stories, four stories at the R1 portion. We are proposing eleven units at the fifth floor. The R1 portion, again, the average grade height of that, of that rooftop is at thirty-nine feet, which just falls in line with the, with the permitted height in the R1 zone. The overall site plan approach, as Jake had previously mentioned, the ingress egress is on Park Street. We have a long ramp coming in off of Park Street that feeds the first-story parking garage. As previously stated by Chuck, by request of planning, the whole building footprint has slid back for an additional five-foot setback at Communipaw Avenue. If I zoom in here now, as part of this proposal on Communipaw Avenue, we are introducing five new street trees. The tree pits are a conforming five-by-ten size and area and that falls in line with the forestry standard of Jersey City. This setback of five feet actually allowed us to do a lot of things here in front of the building. The sidewalk to the eastern portion now is at twelve feet, which allows us a seven-foot kind of pass in between the now conforming tree pit, you know, and the building face. As you go to the west, the actual separation becomes greater at thirteen feet and five inches. So the tree pit is five inches. So we have an additional eight feet, five inches of sidewalk separation in between the face of the building and the tree pit. We actually thought this was very important and a very good suggestion by planning because the building literally was right on top of the curb line. As part of this proposal, we are proposing all new curving, all new sidewalk at the Communipaw and also on the Park Street elevation. As you can see, as, as previously stated, we have an L shape, classic L-shaped building. Building remains actually perpendicular to the property line at Communipaw and as you can see, as you actually travel north, the separation in between the, the back of the properties on Park Street becomes greater. The structural, excuse me, the two structure separation is almost at twenty-two feet with the first lot. And it works its way all the way back to forty-three feet, one inches and again to the multifamily thirty-four four. So, you know, we created separation space due to this irregular lot shape by holding a perpendicular true building. We have a one-story portion with an elevated roof deck for amenity. I will get into that in a couple of minutes. The side yard setbacks to the property is on Prescott Street, as you can see here, is twenty-five feet, eight inches. And it now is itself down to fourteen feet, five inches to an eight-foot setback between lots twenty-six and twenty-seven. Again, this was another planning staff recommendation by actually moving the building line in, creating a little further separation into lots twenty-six and twenty-seven because of their shallow deafness. Okay, proposed first floor of the project. The first floor of the project for overall site area is at sixty-eight percent lot coverage. And that's the equivalent of nineteen thousand six hundred square feet. The remaining portion of the property, if it's ramp, if it's pedestrian pathway or if it's landscaping, the path and the driveway themselves is done out of pervious pavers and the buffer zones that you see hatched in here is either grass or landscaping. If I work from the east going west on the front of Communipaw Avenue, we are proposing again, a two thousand five hundred fifty-four square foot commercial space. We would like to reserve the right to actually subdivide that space if ownership could not find a tenant to secure that much square footage. Centrally located adjacent lobby is the Longo Meeting Room that has direct access from the sidewalk. And I will show you what that room is going to look like in a minute. Centrally located lobby and additional commercial space of one thousand eight hundred twenty-three square feet. We have essentially located amenity space at six hundred and fifty square feet located behind the elevator bank. And then working to the north of the property to the parking garages, you're looking at Garage B, which is all standard parking spaces at grade. This garage is actually a little bit. This garage is actually a little bit lower than the other portion, which is Garage A where the mechanicals are. We have 17 parking spaces located in the central Garage B, okay? And we have 40 bicycle parking spaces immediately to the east of that. As you work north again, we have Garage A. You're looking at 28 mechanical parking spaces. This is one parking space at the deck line or at the grade line. You have an eight-foot pit below that for the additional vehicle. So 28 in total. This is a lift-and-slide system with a center aisle, okay? And we have two car, two compact spaces here on the other side of the stairwell. So 47 cars being proposed. If you look at the standards for the NC and look at the standards for the R1, of the 40 units that we're proposing, the NC at point two per bedroom parking spaces required. We are proposing, I mean, the requirement for the parking in the NC portion of this building is 11 parking spaces. If you look at one-to-one in the R1 zone, the 31 units we're proposing, that would require 31 parking spaces. We would have a total, or you would require a total of 42 parking spaces. We are proposing 47. Therefore, we have a net gain of five parking spaces over what would be required here if you looked at these separately. Going back to the La Longe Community Room, since the building is being raised, we have chosen to design the interior of the La Longe Community Hall in an Art Deco theme. The original building being raised was of the Art Deco era and style. So you see the finishes within the community room to kind of reflect, you know, that timeframe of architecture. We envision on the walls, again, old photographs from the neighborhood of its time, and also John Longo's articles and different snippets on the walls of his life and his work. This is a perspective with your back against the back wall. Looking forward again is an exterior entry from the sidewalk that will be monitored. Again, opposite perspective. This community room will have its own bathroom. And again, we think that it'll fit comfortably in rows, a meeting of 25 people if need be. Talking a little bit about the exterior. We have created the La Longe Community Meeting Hall signage at the building face that's adjacent to the commercial retail space to the east. It will have its own access, and this is part of the architecture to take you to the exterior. Just briefly going back into the floor plan, floors two, three, and four are identical. Each floor with 20 units, and of the 20 units, you're looking at three studios, 12 one-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms, and three three-bedrooms. The one-bedrooms, excuse me, the studios range from 412 to 432 square feet. The one-bedrooms are at 637 to 747. The two-bedrooms are at 842 to 954. And the three-bedroom located in this floor plan is at 1,244 square feet. A good range of area with a well-proportioned program given to us by ownership. Second floor has an elevated roof deck or a common area amenity that's fed from a 593-square-foot amenity space, which is centrally located and planned. Couple of things to note of the amenity space. We have amenity spaces at floors two, three, four, and five, all connected by a singular spine, which is U shapes there. In this particular case, this amenity room has access to the exterior roof deck. It's 2,280 square feet. As you can see, we've created buffer in between this elevated roof deck, which has the potential to look down into the yards of Prescott Street. However, we have buffer separation as well as a six-foot-high privacy screen. So there'll be really no viewing down. There'll be no viewing actually up within to the rooftop amenity space. As you funnel down this roof deck, we have a, we have a well-designed egress there that takes you back down to the grade and the pedestrian path, and then ultimately the driveway. Graphic to the left. This is a perspective shot north, looking into that elevated roof amenity. In the foreground here, you can see we've separated from lots 26 and 27, and then we have an eight-foot setback at the building line. And then when the first-floor garage actually shares the property line with the adjacent properties on Prescott Street, we've created a stamped concrete wall that replicates the pre-existing retaining wall that's to be removed and reconstructed. As previously stated, there's going to be a six-foot-high privacy screen with landscape buffer zone beyond that. Graphic to your right, you're looking at the yards at Prescott Street, looking back up to the structure. We are proposing a hardy plank siding on all three exposures between the east and the north and the west. And we're proposing an old masonry structure on Communipaw. Again, the relationship between the yards on Prescott and the elevated roof deck is an eight-foot grade difference, and then we are proposing a privacy screen with landscape buffer. Final perspective, as you're actually standing, you just came out of the amenity room, and you're looking down this roof deck amenity. We have some privacy screening. The tenants on the second floor will have private terraces. So there'll be no looking in and no looking out, those privacy terraces. Floors three and four, same as two, just without the elevated roof deck, 20 units per floor of the same splits that I just recently gave you. Fifth floor, which is the NC zone, you're looking at 11 units with a 740-square-foot amenity space. Again, we chose to sit the back portion of the building down to 39 feet. We also chose to even remove the stair bulkhead in that portion of the building. Just put a roof access hatch, which is fire department compliant. But we really wanted to lessen the visual impact on any of the adjacent properties, especially on Park Street. So in some of the perspectives I will show you next is that visually this roof and the properties on Park Street, they align with each other. On the upper roof deck, we are proposing a 1,384-square-foot amenity space. That is the equivalent of 6% lot coverage, 8.3% building coverage within building footprint. And we are also proposing a 1,924-square-foot combined area of extensive green roof on the upper roof. Again, here centrally located, we have a central spine or a feature stair. If anybody actually wants to work, excuse me, walk internally within these amenity spaces, they can do so. If not, they can always come out to the common area and take the elevator up. They're proposing some mechanical equipment, fresh air system, and as well as a generator that will be in the screened enclosure at the rooftop, not to be seen, setback from wall street frontages. Okay, proposed building exterior at Communipaw Avenue. At 137 feet long, we chose it was very important to kind of change the scale, you know, of the building face. And we did that by, you know, both horizontally and also vertically. And how did we do that? We have a three-story portion of red brick masonry here that kind of addresses the two-story height immediately to our east. But we chose to actually do a more classic kind of red brick facade, and we pulled elements from Park Street. And I have a detailed sheet that actually shows you that some of the pier details and the corbeling here at the lower course, cornice line, matches some of the things that are going on in the Italianate style on Park Street around the corner. Above that, we have a two-story cap and a pewter masonry. Again, this is a building that's built of its time. So we felt that a more modern cap and a more centrally located kind of a lobby identification done in more of a modern style with a staggered window set was appropriate. However, one of the comments from one of the community meetings was that they thought that the building needed some form of a cap. I don't think this portion of the building actually needed some form of an aluminum cornice. I don't think it would be true to the building type. So what we did is we chose to recess and actually kind of project a dual soldier course top band that actually runs from east all the way to the west. In the background, we have a four-story portion, again, pulling details from the Italianate structures around on Park Street. And we have this series of four piers, kind of with recessed brick, with kind of a raised portion in between window assemblies. Again, that has a cornice and a one-story kind of portion of the new pewter brick. The building does have an identifiable kind of water table done through cast stone. And as you can see, kind of centrally located, we have the La Longe Meeting Room with its own signage and a cantilevered five-foot projected awning, you know, on the building entry. Actually, one of the good things about the five-foot setback now that was being proposed is that that canopy is still within our property boundary. Coming back to the front facade, it's 55 feet in total height. The floor-to-floor heights on both first floor, all the way through the fifth are 11 feet, floor-to-floor. The photographs to your right are structures that happen to be on Park Street and are identifiable, identifiable details that are on this Communipaw facade. You know, we thought it was important to kind of not just drop a very modern building, you know, into this neighborhood. We thought that this neighborhood has really great architecture, and that we should pull some of the elements back into this project. The north elevation, which in this case would be the rear, as you can see, we have hardy cement siding. The portion in the front, again, is at four stories in the R1 at 39 feet in total height. You can see the feature stair coming down from the roof amenity of the five-story portion and the rooftop amenity at the very top, setback in from all building facades, not to be seen. Rendering perspective from Arlington Avenue directly at the building face. Again, as previously described, a four-story portion that kind of relates to the red brick buildings on Park Street, as you can see to your left. Then a three-story portion that addresses the two-story mixture. So the building actually steps down, the grading steps down, and so does the building facade. The commercial spaces will have signage. We have left areas above the entryways for both the western commercial space and the eastern commercial space. Building materials, a classic kind of Hudson River red on the four-story portion at the base, followed by a pewter, a very warm pewter color in the center to the building cap, and then a deep red burgundy on the right portion of the building with the brick detailing. We're proposing a ACM or aluminum material in between the commercial space and the second floor. This will mostly be filled with the commercial signage, and the windows and the metal coping will be in a darker charcoal gray. Again, you're looking at the eastern elevation. We have created two light wells for the larger units, a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. These light wells enable that additional bedroom to be added. This is the one-story rooftop amenity, followed back by the three-story portion of residential, again, in the R1. Lower elevation is the garage entry points. As you can see, the grade is varied. Garage A is slightly higher than Garage B. When Jake comes back on to do his testimony, he will tell you how you get there as far as grading the elevations. This is a graphic representation of what the vehicular ingress and egress and the ramp are coming down and actually entering both Garage A and B. As you can see, there's a retaining wall portion that runs to the western part of the property. This graphic is actually to show you the building height that aligns with the three-story Park Street. You've got to remember, Park Street is actually higher than our property. So they should sit or even slightly below the overall roof elevation of the three-story Park Street structures, the kind of a butt into Communipaw Avenue. Building section again, Communipaw Ave. up top, steps down, commercial spaces step down. And the long building section, again, the garages at different varying heights, they will be separated by a retaining wall. Just in closing, I know this board sometimes does like to see shadow studies. It was filed as part of this application. We do think that we've done a very good job as far as separating, especially the back portion of the building in between the properties on both Park Street and Prescott Street. As you can see, from March, June, September, and December, at midday, in between the hours of probably 10:30 and 2 o'clock, there'll be no shadows cast. Depending on the time of day and the time of year, the properties to the east are going to be casting shadow on the back end of our building, as well as, you know, our building will be casting some shadow on the properties on Park Street. Each structure, as it's constructed, with any type of height, will cast a shadow. But we like to think through the building design and through kind of the carefully designed setbacks, that we've kind of, we've kind of mitigated, you know, the shadowing to both the eastern and the western properties to the very least. So this concludes my presentation tonight.
Just a bit of housekeeping. I think this presentation is prepared for tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can we just mark this on the record, A2? And could you just give us the number of slides? I'm not seeing it.
Yes, I have, I have 38 slides in this presentation.
Okay, so this will be A2, and you'll be sending that in, Anthony, to planning?
Absolutely.
Okay, A2.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, okay, thank you, Anthony. So at this time, I'm going to defer to the board, but I think Anthony was very detailed in his presentation on the site work. And my thought is to move right into Charles Height on his testimony and to leave it at the end. If the board has any engineering questions for Mr. Modesto, whether it's engineering or traffic, we did a traffic report as well. But I'll defer to the chairman as to whether you want to hear from Mr. Modesto now or leave that towards the end for questions.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we'll see if anyone has any questions about traffic study. But if not, then I don't know that we need to go into that.
Okay. So then I'm going to move right into Mr. Height to address the requested variances.
Okay, and would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Yes.
There you are. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
And if you could just state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, good evening, Charles Height, last name spelled H-E-Y-D-T.
Thank you.
And Mr. Height has been qualified many times before this board, so.
Yes, we accepted qualifications, thank you.
Thank you, yes. Mr. Height, could you please address the requested variances in connection with this application?
Yes, I'd be happy to do so. Just for the members of the public that are on tonight, I am a licensed professional plan in the state of New Jersey and chairman. My license is still in good standing, I know you always ask that. We are requesting one use variance along with five bulk variances. The use variance is for the portion of the multifamily structure in the R1. This board's aware that it really, the test is particular suitability as well as special reasons. So I'll just briefly cover that in terms of what those specifics are. First off, this property is split zoned, so we are challenged with trying to meet both zoning.
First off, this property is split zoned, so we are challenged with trying to meet both zoning ordinances. I do believe that we have fully complied with the NC district zones for the portion of the property and the NC with the both mixed use ground floor commercial and multifamily above. And as Mr. Vandemar testified, the portion in the rear yard really does try to balance the bulk of the building in the center of the property and and apply most of the standards of the R to with respect to the building mass. The property is oversized. Overall, it's about twenty twenty-seven thousand eight hundred. The portion of the property in the R1 is about seventeen thousand nine hundred. And the portion of the property in the NC district is about ten thousand nine hundred. We are, this property is located on Communal Paul Avenue, which is the major corridor. We are obviously reflecting that mixed use, more active portion of the property along Communal Paul and reserving the rear yard, that that internal portion for both the the more less intense residential only portion as well as the site access. We do have access to public public transit in the area, bus routes along Communal Paul. And we are within walking distance to both the Garfield Avenue and MLK Light Rails. There is a mix of uses in the area. Mr. Vandemar showed some photographs. We do have the adjacent apartment building. It's a nineteen-unit multifamily building with no parking on site. The density there is a hundred and fourteen units per acre. Just for the board's reference, the portion of the building, the R1, which we need relief for, thirty units on approximately seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet of that that portion of the building is about seventy-three units per acre. So that portion that we need the use variance for with respect to density is less dense than the other multifamily structure in this median area. We do obviously have other uses and the schools as well as the parks, Arlington Park and Berry Lane Park within close proximity. We are working with the unique topographic features on the site. I think Mr. Vandemar showed some elevations in terms of the driveway along the western portion of the property and how it accesses the 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 parking area for for the property. So I think with respect to the uniqueness of the topography, we're working that into the design of the property. And I think that's something that lends itself to to what we're proposing. In terms of special reasons, I would just add quickly to reiterate, we're proposing a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot community room that will accommodate approximately twenty-five people, which is a very comfortable room for the neighborhood to have access to. We are providing residential amenities throughout the building. Obviously, a building seventy-two units is is needs to have a direct access to residential amenities. We are providing six affordable units, which really does meet that lofty goal of twenty percent with respect to the portion in the R1. So so that's another special reason for with this application. I do agree with Mr. Ward's assessment in terms of the purposes of zoning. He identified purpose A to guide the general welfare. This is the appropriate location for a use of this nature. I do agree that it's also establishing appropriate population density, as I mentioned, where less than than the nearest residential multifamily in the R1. And lastly, I think Mr. Ward referenced that we promote a desirable visual environment. You just heard from Mr. Vandemar with respect to the design of the building. I I believe he testified as to the Italianate character being influenced in in the front facade, which which I think is is respectful of the existing structures in the area. And then obviously, some of the other elements on the other facades as well, the brick elements. I would also like to add that I I do believe in further purpose C as a special reason because we really did try to balance the building mass and the rear portion of the site to provide the most light and air to not only this property but also the adjacent properties. So that's the bulk summary of the particular suitability and special reasons for the use variance. I'll just quickly run through the bulk variances to relate to building mass. We did point out where we are encroaching the required rear yard. Quickly, just two points to remind the board. One, we are accommodating a greater sidewalk, so that's contributing more of our front yard to to a wider sidewalk. That kind of pushes the building back. But we also, in addition to that, in the rear yard, we've tiered the building. I think the 3D massings that were just shown show that. The other relief we do need is with respect to number of stories, we are proposing four stories in the R1, which only three stories are permitted. Again, we meet the thirty-nine feet, which is the maximum that's intended. So we comply with that, but it's just the number of stories. With respect to the western portion, Park Avenue is long, is is higher in elevation. So we are actually going to be lower than those than those buildings along Park Avenue. And obviously, the tiering of the building to mitigate the height along the eastern portion of site is is being implemented there. The last few deal with parking. We've discussed this with city planning. We do need dimensions for parking space with and drive aisle with, but portions of the parking are automated. And again, these are going to be all dedicated to residential tenants who will be able to frequent the parking on a higher current and and be very comfortable with turning movements that they need to make. So there's no no people from the general public really intending to park here as if it was like a commercial parking lot. And lastly, I did want to point out, we do need a maximum curb cut with respect to the exist, it's actually the existing curb cut on on Park Avenue. So a few points here, just to reiterate, we're consolidating driveway access to the site. We're we're not proposing any sort of vehicular entrance from Communal Paul. That obviously provides for a greater pedestrian corridor along Communal Paul. And that consolidation is utilizing an existing curb cut, where redoing the paving there and also proposing two street trees. Those are the bike bulk criteria. With respect to the, those are the positive aspects for the bulk criteria. With respect to the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any sort of substantial detriment to the general welfare. Notwithstanding all the positive attributes of the design of the building and everything we've tried to incorporate in the overall project. We did work with Mr. Modesto with respect to stormwater. He's designed a stormwater plan that will meet city standards and is a substantial improvement over the property today, which has no stormwater plant management system and virtually all sheet flow onto adjacent properties. So this actually collects and transfers to the city system. So it actually is a substantial improvement. We believe we're improving the streetscape considerably, so I think we've covered that. And and again, providing those setbacks where appropriate is is to to increase the light and air to not only this property, but also the adjacent properties. With respect to the second prong of the negative criteria, no substantial detriment to or impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Again, we're really trying to balance the fact that this property does front along Communal Paul Avenue. This is where we want density in a pedestrian walkable neighborhood. So I think we're meeting the that purpose of the NC district. With respect to the R1 district, we are trying to balance the building mass as an infill multifamily use, which is compatible to other residential uses in the area. And and obviously, there are mixed use, multifamily uses already in this neighborhood. So I don't believe it's any substantial impairment to the existing neighborhood in terms of land uses as well as the the zoning ordinance. For all the reasons that that we stated, I think on balance, the the requested relief is justified in this application. I believe for furthering purposes of of the zoning ordinance as well as the master plan of providing a housing variety, a mix of uses and and this board should be comfortable granting the application. So that's really the direct testimony I prepared tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, and then again, I do have Mr. Modesto available for any civil engineering questions or traffic questions. But so I'll defer to the board whether or not they want to hear from him. But other than that, that would complete our presentation.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions for any of the witnesses or civil engineering or traffic study type questions?
I I have a question, Chairman. I understand there's going to be six units for affordable housing. With the mix of bedrooms and studio, how are they developed or how how does that come out with those six? Where do they fall in those areas?
Yes, that's a good question. That that will be further developed with the Division of Affordable Housing. We would enter into an agreement with with the Division of Affordable Housing and they they would allocate or, you know, we we have that discussion, but essentially they will tell us the mix that they want to see.
Okay, that's good.
And also We stipulate that none of them are the studio apartments, the undersized studio apartments?
How many studios do we have, Anthony?
Twelve.
Twelve. Let me just. I'm just waiting for, I'd see my, if I can get an answer from my client on that. Yes, that's that that would, that's okay. We we can stipulate that no studios will be the affordable units.
Okay, that's a good one. And who would be the point of contact for the community room for scheduling?
Right, so the idea is to put put like a website for the for the building so that you'll have a link. So somebody, people can, you know, pull that that website up and have the link so that they can reserve it directly and have direct contact with with the ownership and the management company and kind of have like an online booking, if you will.
Okay, and access?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I I think it might be to Mr. Vanderbilt or Mr. Charles because either one, Charles briefly touched on the water retention, but I didn't think Mr. Vanderbilt mentioned anything about water retention. Especially after all those bad rain and all we've been having. It'd be interesting to know what exactly the water retention plan is.
Yeah, I I think actually Mr. Modesto would be probably the the person to address that.
Okay, you want to take that?
Yeah, no problem. So we are going to be proposing an underground detention system. This will have twenty-one thousand gallons of water that will be only held within it before it's slowly released into the Communal Paul Ave. The site's split up into two different drainage areas, so there's gonna be no spill from the site onto the adjoining parcels. It'll all be collected through the building and some some yard inlets and routed underground into the Communal Paul. So there'll be a net reduction of twenty-five percent in the larger storm events, like the one-hundred-year storm event.
Okay, now one other question I have, Mr. Aaron, maybe there was a mention of a signage. Now, is that signage gonna be small enough that doesn't need any kind of special variances or?
It's, yeah, I believe the signage proposed is going to be compliant with with the regulations.
All right, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Say, anyone else have any questions at this time? Lindsay, does it look like there's anyone from the public?
I don't see any hands raised right now, but if anyone is here for five hundred Communal Paul and you have a question or a comment, you can go to the bottom of your screen and click raise hand, or if you're calling in, you would dial star nine.
Give it maybe twenty seconds. I mean, I I find it hard to believe that no one from the public called in from this application, but maybe that's the case.
Does it seem that way, Lindsay? Anybody from the public?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, so we'll close the public portion of the application. Matt, maybe you can speak to, starting off by saying, everyone from the public who was displeased by the last time we presented, they all, they met with the applicant. Everything they wanted has been met, and they couldn't be happier with this project.
Either that or they're holding a seance with Mr. Longo. I'm not entirely sure. I I I will speak to a little about of the staff memo. And and thank you, Chairman Jacobs. So there was a staff memo prepared August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And and given over to the to the applicant and his team, distributed as well to commissioners. Many of the points, I think, were aligned with the testimony from Mr. Height tonight. I'll just add in addition to his comments on the equivalence or more intense density in the R1 that overall this site is at one oh eight dwelling units per acre, which is actually quite low if you're just considering this as part of the NC district. And as a as an as an example, across the street, the project that they referenced in their presentation tonight, five oh three, five oh nine, Communal Paul is was a application before the planning board, and it was at two hundred and thirty-three dwelling units per acre. Keeping in mind that this application is a split zoned, I think that they put some good reasons on the record regarding special reasons or positive criteria regarding this proposal and have addressed negative criteria as well. There are eight conditions that were part of that staff memo. One of them would be amended to stipulate the no studios, which would be number six, which addresses the affordable housing units as well as number seven does. And the last one, which is more unique to this application, is regarding the widening of the sidewalk along Communal Paul Avenue to ensure that they enter into an easement access agreement so that that becomes accessible sidewalk and is used there with access or pedestrian movement. If there's any questions that the commissioner may have, I I am here.
In all those conditions, conditions would be acceptable.
Matt, I just had a question about like unit size. I I know that it's a trend, you know, probably not just in Jersey City, that you know, unit sizes decrease over time and prices of of units for rental increase over. scrutinizes these or is thinking about putting in like minimum thresholds for size of units. But I I have concerns if we approach, you know, four hundred square feet for studio apartments, that that's, and I understand that there are cities in the United States with smaller unit sizes than that on average. But it's well below kind of the historical average for studio apartments in Jersey City, which are, you know, over five hundred and fifty square feet. So I I mean, I don't know if that's something the city wants to address, and and it's not on this developer. But but I'd like to kind of see all developers kind of be better and 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 not try to maximize profit, maximizing as many small units as possible into their developments.
That's a really good point, Chairman. I think it's well taken and is very appropriate to consider across the city and especially in certain zones. There's often along commercial corridors an apprehension to for families to locate because there's perhaps more noise, there's more traffic. So maybe I think that's some of the thinking that's gone into. So maybe, I think that's some of the thinking that's gone into the creation of NC. With it not having a density standard. But I think your point is well taken.
Does anyone have any questions for staff or for witnesses?
I'd like to make a motion for approval on Z twenty dash zero eight one with the staff conditions.
Was there a second, I'm sorry?
Commissioner Patel did too.
All right, the roll call then, a motion to approve with staff conditions, Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Arajo?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McCormick?
Yeah.
And Chairman Jacobs?
I'm voting yes, but I, as I said on the record earlier, I mean, I, I find this hard to believe. That there wasn't at least someone from the community who spoke today saying. We've spoken to and our concerns have been addressed, so I hope that that's the case. That those were taken into consideration, it sounds like it, this was a thoughtful. I think the evaluation of the initial proposal. And as I said earlier, I do have not just this project, but you know, I hope. Chuck, that when you talk to your clients, you emphasize that we should, you know, try to have some appropriate unit sizes. In our city, because I will probably try to emphasize on some ones where it looks like it's getting. You know, it's small, but maybe we want to rethink through the project.
Yeah, understood, yeah, I totally, I understand your comments and the theory behind that. And I'm surprised that there aren't people here tonight as well, we did meet with them and I thought, you know, some people would just show up to comment, but.
But, you know, this is one of our lessons, I guess.
Oh, good, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman, with that said, we have four resolutions to memorialize. The first two were hearings that we had on July eighth. On July eighth, present were Chairman Jacobs, Vice Chair Donnelly. Commissioners McCormick, Shadid, Brown, Arroyo, and Green. The first case is Z twenty dash zero two nine, it's thy holding. It was a C variance for fifty-one Concord Street. That passed seven in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that. Next case, also July eighth, same seven commissioners. This also passed seven in favor, none opposed, the case is Z twenty-one dash zero zero three. The applicant was Gene Maurice, it was a minor site plan with C and D variances for four seventy-five Bergen Avenue. As I said, that passed seven in favor, none opposed, all in favor of approving that. The next two cases occurred on August twenty-sixth. And present on August twenty was Acting Chairperson Donnelly. Commissioners McCormick, Shadid, Patel, Green, and Arroyo. And both of these applications passed six in favor, none opposed. The first is Z twenty-one dash zero five three, four twenty-nine Palisade Riverview LLC. It was an extension of a minus site plan approval with a D variances for four twenty-nine Palisade Avenue. As I said, that passed six in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that. The next case also August twenty-sixth, most all passed six in favor, none opposed. Same six commissioners were present, the case is Z twenty dash zero one eight. Bio Mesh Patel was the applicant, thirty-six Corbin Avenue is the address. And it was an application for a minus site plan approval with D and C variances, as I, as I said. That passed six in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that. And that includes at least the resolutions to memorialize. And that might conclude our business.
Thank you very much, a second?
Second.